...call to order the regular meeting, the Moni Village Board, September twenty-fourth. Uh, rise for the question.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Present and in force.
Trustee Gray. There. Mr. Moore. Here. Pop.
Here.
And Grisik.
Right.
He's American.
You have a... Mr. Kevin DeBries from Moni Meadows is going to be providing our...
I was gonna pray for Dorothy Margaret, she's in the hospital right now.
Okay.
She films her as my wife. She prayed for Dorothy Margaret, she...
Margaret appears here.
Yeah, okay. She's in the hospital right now. They know where she is. Might catch out them, I know who you were.
Oh, good.
Sorry.
Very good. Let's all bow our heads and pray. Can we do that? God, we bow our heads now and our hearts to recognize that all authority comes from you, Lord. We thank you for the life you've given us today and where we think of those who are in unfortunate circumstances even right now as we pray for Dorothy who's in the hospital. I'm sure there's other friends and family who serve here. We ask you to be with all of those concerned and attend to their needs, Father. I thank you for each one that you've placed an authority here on this board. Lord, I ask that you would give them wisdom as they discuss the different matters pertaining to our village. Lord, we ask, Lord, that your blessing would fall upon the village of Moni. Lord, we pray that all the discussions here, each person would be slow to speak and quick to listen. Lord, may your blessing just fall upon the families, the homes, the schools, that you would watch over all of our public servants here in the village and keep them safe. And we ask you a blessing to be here right now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Open to the public, agenda items only. Please come to the podium.
Mayor Ingeal, Mr. Ray is forty-seven thirty-one, Iowa State. I just wanted to touch on the subject here after executive session, uh, and actually regarding executive session issues. I was wanting to know, is there ever be a vote on anything that's discussed in the executive session? Because I know we don't have privy to that discussion.
Sure.
But I understand that after discussion or whatever's done in executive session, there will be a vote on it. And I do understand, understand as far as transparency goes, that the town IPO should do due diligence to ensure that that's carried out by when they, before they vote, the town has, you know, can sit out there and listen. But if they do it after executive session, there probably won't be nobody in the town. So I was hoping that the town, the village, instead of voting on anything during, that was discussed in the executive session, hold off to the next meeting so more people can be here to listen to what's being voted on. You get nervous.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Ray, it's the purpose of executive sessions to deal with matters that are of a sensitive nature more often than not. And as such, there are times when the nature of the discussion that takes place in executive session is really a matter of internal confidential things that pertain to either personnel or negotiations, litigation, different things of that sort. And the purpose for having a ongoing action regarding executive session issues as a specific line item on the agenda is in the event that there were any to take action. We're not allowed to take action in any executive session. Only thing we can do in there is discuss the issues as it pertains to the village and very restricted to the topics of discussion in there. But if we do need to take action, oftentimes we need to be able to take that, in some cases, swiftly. And there again, it would be a matter that if it were something that once there was consensus built and something established that it warranted public participation in some regard, then I don't think anybody here would have any problem with it being deferred. But there are times where it needs to be done a little bit more quickly, so. And this has been on the agenda for...
You know, Mayor, I'm very sorry. I haven't been to a meeting in a long time, like I said the other day, when I was here before. I didn't realize that it's always a standing thing under, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. But, but just keep in mind that if it isn't an emergency issue and it has to be voted on right after executive session, maybe the town can go so as far as to do a little more due diligence to just say, okay, we're even in agreement in the executive session, we ought to take action in front of the village, let's hold off to the next village board meeting. So the village can, you know, not know what happens behind the closed doors because we don't have privy information, I know that. But we just get a more of an open feeling about it. That's all. I hope I said it right. But I, I agree with you and I forgot about that.
Rarely have we taken action.
Oh, no, I know, I know that. I know that for a fact. It does happen. I've seen it happen.
It could happen tonight.
It could. You're right.
What may I say, Mayor, when we do, the cameras, what?
Yes.
People can see it on jail floor.
Yeah. Last time I think it was done was when we picked up that piece of property on Egyptian and, uh...
That would've been about ten years ago.
That was the other administration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else pertaining to the agenda? I close open to the public, I entertain motion to approve, please sign agenda.
Sager.
Horn and Grisik. Roll call please.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Grisik.
Yes.
And Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Ford.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we have election season coming up and the Illinois Election Board has kind of worked with us and supplied us with the bullets and instructions. It's on their website. We've been instructed to direct possible candidates to that site. We are going the extra step and printing that off for anybody who comes in. We've been advised not to offer instructions. It's not our forte, we're not attorneys, and we don't want to give any of that advice. So it's on the Illinois Election Board website and available here at our...
Point of view, our occasion.
Yes, sir.
I've had a couple requests from citizens who vindicated, I mentioned it today, that they had come to the village hall to get registered to vote. They were told the paperwork wasn't available. I've had two different stories in terms of how long people have to register to vote. Do we know exactly how long we have to register to vote this year? Clark, basically?
No, I don't have a specific answer.
Mr. Mayor?
Of course not.
There is grace period voting that can take place at the county subsequent to that, but that's where they register and vote at the same time and they have to do that at the county court's office.
At the county court's office.
Yeah, they can do that up to the Saturday before the election, I believe.
Okay, we put that in the minutes?
Sure. But ideally, you register now.
And we do have the paperwork?
I believe we have some extra paperwork now.
Okay, thank you.
Should we have a register?
We do.
You do?
The, I believe clerk, the deputy clerk, Mr. Grisell, are all registered.
Is there specific hours that folks need to come in?
Just the regular office hours. Deputy clerk is zero most of the time. If somebody needs, uh, somebody to come to their house and get registered, I'm sure, so that's paperwork, we'll, we'll, we'll travel.
Minor charge.
Yeah, I can't do that, so. All right. Nothing else, sir?
End of report.
Thank you. Under the mayor's agenda, I know it was brought up at the, the last meeting, and again, my apologies for misinterpreting the intent of that. We have subsequently begun outsourcing RIT services and frankly, it is more of a relief than I realized because it was a distraction from the services as a mayor I shouldn't be providing. So while I, I was bothered by the topic, frankly, it's a, it's a good thing. So there's plenty of things that I need to be working on that actually have been a distraction for me, so. Thank you to trustee Gonzalez for reminding me of that. And so just to let you all know, we haven't begun that process. Item number, not an item number, but I know that we have a number of our officials took time out of their very busy schedules and went to the LM this way for the conferences last week, weekend. I need to apologize once again for, in, in the past, I know I, I, I'm very task oriented and I find myself expecting a lot and not recognizing how valuable everybody's time is because it takes time away from the family and the regular activities to, to go down there. It's, it can be very tiresome and while some people look at it as a social activity, there's a lot that gets accomplished as far as improving our service to the community. And I just want to go on record as thanking each one of the officials that was able to take time out of their schedule to go down there. I, I know that whether it be for one day or for the, for the two, two and a half days that were involved in that, it was, it was a great opportunity or a little bit more to observe what other communities are doing, see what the current trends are, things that we need to deal with. And if any of the trustees at this point would like to share some of what they observe while they're there, it would be fine.
I'll just make a comment, if you don't mind, I, I went to three different sessions. I found that impressively most clear enough was the demolition of buildings and abandoned buildings and things you can do about them. And a simple thing, which never thought that would be, you have an abandoned home, you get a broken window. A broken window leads to, depending on its elevation, rodents, animals. On the other broken window, it's bringing down the whole neighborhood. A simple thing like that can just escalate and, and really destroy a neighborhood. So I, I think with our code enforcement and all that, we gotta be a little diligent. If we see that happening, we observe, we gotta find out if it's a bank hold or who, who's responsible and, and at least have a window fixed, if it's that simple, before it gets worse.
Sure.
And then they got into dangerous ones too that you had to actually...
Our public safety.
Yeah, our public safety keeps people away, yes. But it's, it's very tedious, it's costly, you can let it get out of hand, so. It was a good session.
And, and that ties in very closely with the Department of U. overstate, so.
That's why I...
I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I went to a session on, this is called Lessons Learned From The Village Of Diamond And Village Of Washington, which is near Peoria, Diamond is near Coal City, but they suffered tornadoes this year. Now hopefully we don't go through with what they've gone through, although I do remember in June of two thousand eight, we had a tornado just go south of town and took out a lot of power lines and, you know, went through the University Park industrial area. So I know this, this could happen to us, but learned a lot on this and I think, Ruben, I would like to be with you at some point, review this as our EMA director and make sure we are up to speed. Even things like having contracts in place for dumpsters, having that ready to go, so in case, God forbid, we do have this happen, that we can move in and clean up debris quickly and have call centers and volunteer management and all those kinds of things in place. Just an action plan, and I'm glad you're here with us as a EMA director and I'm sure you've been doing, working on those things as, as well, in addition to your, your other hats you wear. But it was a very good session, in addition to other ones that I went to.
Trustee Holston.
I attended seven sessions. My brain still hasn't set up quite for me. There are most of them economic development sessions. I'll probably address some of those in future meetings, but probably one of the things I got out of the most was, and DJ and I went to one together as a matter of fact, that they talk a lot about how villages are going together to co-op, if you will, certain services, not just purchasing, but economic services. And I think we got some good ideas and some good opportunities out of that. Also had, of course, an opportunity to meet a number of different people at different level across the state that are involved. A couple economic development directors from, from across the state, so it's a good, good meeting, my first, so it was very informative. And like I said, I have a little bit of an overload from all the data and all the information I got, but definitely worth our time to go.
Anybody else?
There was several that I went to strictly about leadership and I went to women in government, which is, was actually okay. And a legislative update was actually the first one that I attended and our Congressman DeLuca was one of the, the roundtable facilitator of that. And not only they were talking about the legislative updates on the House bills and the Senate bills that are up for action that directly affect us, not only for education, but like home rule and no home rule. But he is also, and I didn't realize this, a, a committee chair, I didn't know there was such a thing, the House Committee On Villages And Towns. So our own Congressman is the chair for that committee to help smaller towns be a force as, as much as the big cities in the, in the state of Illinois too. So that was a learning experience there. And ones that I enjoyed the most frankly were all strategic planning and action planning for us, knowing to, as best as we've grown, as quickly, quickly as we've grown, our strategic plan probably has none. So we've got some homework to do on that.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, and I appreciate everybody taking time out of their schedule if they're able to, and not everybody's able to go, but it's very useful. At this time, I will turn to the officials' report. Public Works.
I have a couple things tonight. Out north, Eagle Fair, we will be doing the storm repairs soon. I know that was talked about a few months ago. I mean, it, it is in the prime, in the progress, I'm sorry, with MJ. It will be happening very shortly, we'll be getting it fixed, obviously, but this weekend you'll see the, the major improvement hopefully. And again, as far as this weekend goes, if folks did see some people out for public works on Sunday, we had a whole lot of rain in a short amount of time on Saturday that pretty much flooded Moni in the sewer systems and they were out there on Sunday, right back on working at it. So that was a, a good thing to see that we didn't just let it go until Monday morning. So public works, again, I appreciate that and hopefully the folks in the village do. This Sunday coming up also, the new water tower, which is behind the BP gas station that you see on fifty-seven about sixteen months ago, was our first cleaning out of it. This will again happen. And again, it's, it's not a harm to the water, you guys can still do whatever you want on Sunday. This needs to happen every year, year and a half. Unfortunately, the first time it happened, there was not a whole lot of good stuff that you wanted to see, but hopefully we're hoping, I know usually we're hoping, to see, to see less filaments in this water. Again, the water has improved a lot. This needs to happen every year, year and a half, so. Again, this will be happening Sunday, but it will not be affecting any water in the water systems that's going through town like the hydrant flushing. So again, Jackie Hurley, you can do your laundry on Sunday. Okay?
Write my own ticket.
And one other thing, starting October, out in the fairgrounds, again, the public works department will be out doing the crack and seal. And again, as everybody knows, we are in the process of working on our streets, trying to get everything better. The big project is happening now, coming off Egyptian Trail, but you will see our public works department out there filling the cracks, trying to keep them as best as they can. So just bear with us, and again, it's not that, it's not that it's being denied, it's just a work in progress and the big project of fixing all the streets is, is a lot of money. Being about the public works in the last six months, speaking with our superintendent and our engineers, it's, there's a lot of money, it needs to be involved in it, and I understand that everybody's frustrated as I am, but it doesn't grow on trees, folks. Let's, let's bear with us and please be patient, we are trying. That is all I have.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation.
Two small things, just really quickly to remind everybody that we have this evening, or this coming Sunday, it's the Free Music In The Park is going to be four to six P.M. The Neighborhood Blues Band, Sunday, nine twenty-eight, from four to six P.M. So if you're needing some blues on a Sunday afternoon, four to six P.M. at the, at the Park of Fire and Tru... And then, and the other thing too, one of the things that, blessedly, one of our churches in town, for Second Place Church, I believe, is doing a Run For The Lives 5K. If you would like to be involved, if you would like to donate, if you would like to register to walk, there is sheets that look just like this out in our lobby, so please, and if anybody asks me, go ahead, ask me, what is Run For Their Lives? Second Place is involved that for human trafficking, they're trying to raise money against human trafficking. So obviously, we are worthwhile, so thanks to them for doing that too. End of report.
Thank you very much. Business Development, the report. Finances?
I don't see Farrell here, but I know he's working on numbers for Fall Fair. I saw some preliminaries today. I know it's not meant to be a money-making endeavor for us, but it's not meant to be a money-losing endeavor, so we're, we're probably gonna break even, maybe a few thousand above what we were. So I'll have, should have numbers next time.
Thank you. Building development?
I have nothing.
I have a report. Public Safety, please.
All right.
Thank you very much. Attorney's Report?
Thank you, Mayor. I have three items for the board's consideration. The first item, I believe we received a request from DHTR, Ian Coolen, that will bring the audience tonight. The board recalls, we signed a deal with a company roughly three to four years ago. He developed a nice piece of property on Governor's Highway, is requesting a tip payment of thirty thousand dollars. He has submitted adequate invoices proving that he incurred well over the thirty thousand dollars, but he is asking for reimbursement of thirty thousand dollars.
Mr. Batiste, I want you to review the information provided, it was a, it's a very, very set of papers.
Yes, I did want to give the board a hernia with the, with the size of this packet, but I did review it and there's well over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of improvements, paid invoices, receipts for the property.
And so this one, he's asking for the...
I move to approve thing.
A second. There you go. Holston, no reason, any further discussion?
When's the open house? I mean, the, the...
The open heading?
The open heading.
We're gonna try, we're gonna, we're gonna try and do it around Christmas, you know, around the holidays. We still have, we're still in pegging oxes, you know, it's, and we're just going into our busy season, season two, so I'm still trying to run my business and still just trying to get in. I have old pictures and everything else, but you guys will be the first to know.
Oh, looks nice.
Thank you very much.
They've already done more service calls, so...
All right, roll call please.
Trustee Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Grisik.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Grayton.
Yes.
Next one, any other?
Thank you, Mayor. The next item, the board recalls, we struck a tentative deal with Margaret Trucklines in the last board meeting with respect to redevelopment. I understand they closed on the property, I believe, last Friday. We should have the final form for the board's review at the next board meeting. They did incorporate the changes that the mayor and the board brought up at the last meeting. There's gotta be a couple minor changes in there, but overall, we made a lot of progress. But they did, my understanding, they did close, based on the representation that we have in the deal, we have a deal with them, but they, they do own that property up there now. So they'll be up at the next board meeting. The third item, Your Honor, is that's drafting ordinance and many title of four, chapter two, section two C of the Village Code. Basically, this pertains to the maintenance and the grass cutting of certain properties. We amended it to indicate that it's actually zone property, that would, if it's over one acre, would be exempt from more than the first thirty feet. What we're attempting to do, through the efforts of public works department, is have the other properties, such as industrial, commercial, and properties less than one acre, be responsible maintaining it themselves. So all this was limiting who would be exempt from owning the entire site. So what I did is changed it to say zone agriculture if it's over one acre of wood size.
So anything that's in a commercial, industrial areas would still have to adhere to those standards. And as the attorney indicated there, one of the things we've run into is stormwater management's been negatively impacted by the lack of care for some people's properties. And even with a vacant, it doesn't mean they haven't caused those problems, so. At that, I'll entertain a motion to approve that and if we have a little other one, I support that. I would accept that motion.
Seven.
Pop and your votes. Board's number seven?
That'd be sixteen ninety-five, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
As long as it's only a motion and a settlement, we can still discuss. I just want to mention you are very lighthearted about the impact that that has on, on our water system. It's very costly for us to correct some of the problems, and you did spend some money trying to correct one problem.
Well, we have a timeline right now. Mr. Crizell, if you want to remind the, the board briefly the situation we're in and pertaining to that.
I can, if you'd like, sir.
Sure.
Good evening. As you recall, the board approved a stormwater management committee fund that we submitted to be able to help with our wetland delineation problems that we have and stormwater management plans, where they, in fact, we received a grant for twenty-seven thousand matching, funds matching. The board approved it to go ahead and use these funds to be able to help clean up some of these areas. And in doing that, we found that some of these properties that were within these areas were neglected due to that restriction on that ordinance. So this is kind of cleaning up that ordinance based on the fact of trying to clean up the stormwater and get, get, get the water burning where they have to go to reduce flooding in, in any kind of severe rainy event, so.
Instigation, right?
Yeah, but we should, again, you know, you get the water away, but, you know, keeps the streams flowing, the flooding from happening, and the way it helps kind of reduce a lot of the things that we have going on. So this is kind of a follow-up in that to help get those property owners that have these lots that want to move them or sell them to, to take the responsibility in the sense that it's less that public works is responsible for, or we can charge a fee to do it if we have to do it in-house and at least recruit those costs.
Two, two questions. You mentioned the word wetlands. Does that include any land that might, I guess my concern would be there might be some lands that are actually designed to be where you want to grow because it's an area where you might have a pond in the median area or something like that? Is this going to include that?
In this particular case, in some of these lots that we're talking about, there is a wetland that goes through, but it's not a conventional wetland where you would see a typical pond. This would only, in any of the wetlands that we found, and when I say wetlands, it's just a marshland area, that if left untreated for too long, automatically kind of falls into that wetland area. We've done some delineation in those wetlands, be able to identify markers as to what it is, and then we work around those in keeping our distance so that we don't disrupt anything in there. And if you see that's in that wetland, if flower, tree shrub, a lot of light doesn't get disrupted, we'd have to be approval to do that beforehand.
So environmental?
No one, and what pack, because it's specific one, we've already taken steps to make sure that in the areas that were having a lot of the stormwater problems, leaving the municipal party has already been identified.
Okay. And in the interest of self-disclosure, and I've discussed this already with the mayor, where I work at UTI facility out here, we have a field that builds from the lot up to the fence, which is a fence for noise mediation. We have what we call burn there that we purposely let grow for, and only move twice a year so that it keeps the sound to a minimum, it helps to beat down the sound. That area is not used by any of the public, there's no drainage in that area, but my concern is that's not covered in this. So is it possible for us to add something to this that would cover something like that, not just for my company, but for other companies? Because burns serve a purpose that might be, in this case, an environmental purpose of reducing sound.
to reduce the sound.
Yeah, and I think with the, with the preamble, if you will, of what our intent is to try to remedy the situation, that is not one of the concerns, but the concern would be, and so in those situations where there, it's strategically what grow, I would think that would be something that we would be able to buy an internal policy, have an agreement with the property owner, or even buy perhaps an additional amendment to the ordinance. I'm not sure how the board even would agree, because it'd have to be very specific that it would, otherwise, because if you, if you're not, if you don't give the specifics on it, then everybody'd say, well, I'm going to these dog breathes just to...
I completely understand, but the opposite, that could be true as well. You guys are people who use this against a business that's legitimately trying to use, do this, something right with this.
I would think in the situation you're describing there, where it's clearly being used for assistance in mitigating sound transmission, I would think that there'd be a way that we could address that from a, just a simple policy agreement with the core understanding and trying to...
Develop a agreement?
Yeah, something. Because...
For development, so we can run through...
And still, and still, at that point, I'd still say not to exceed a certain, you know, how much, say twelve inches or something along those lines, or whatever the case may be.
In the section two, Mr. Krishna, it says an agricultural zone is the one that you might, so it's only agricultural, is that the agricultural side?
No, it's not agricultural.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
And Holston?
Yes.
At this time, I have opened the public non-agenda items. You will come forward over your canvas in three minutes, and give your name and address.
My name is Jackie Coughlin, and I'm in 25954 South Middle Point in Monee. I'm here to ask for, well, actually, my petition here, I have a petition with about four hundred and fifty names on it.
Okay.
The cost of the garbage and the water service in the village of Monee should be senior-friendly by providing a discount for senior citizens, or seniors usually have an income of twelve thousand to fourteen thousand a year. And with this raised, I mean, they face a big chunk of their social security.
Sure.
If that's all they've got. So I went and got a petition signed by about four hundred and fifty people, and I haven't even ended with only four days. I mean, two people tell me no, and they're fit. Anyway, I would like to see seniors, and I called the garbage company, and they told me that it's not up to them to give a discount, it's up to the town and the people that do the billing for whether or not you give, give the seniors a discount, or even people that are at low income. I mean, that is a big increase for our water bill, for somebody on that kind of an income, if that's all they've got, and the majority of them have, that's all they've got.
Sure. I understand that. Well, I'm not exactly sure, you talked to the garbage company, but we have a contract that's been signed with the garbage company that was two and a half years ago, I believe it was, that was signed, it's got another eight years left on the contract. We have to pay the bill exactly as it is for all residential pickup. So if we were to decrease the senior bills, we'd then have to increase everybody else's to make up for it, or we'd have to tax everybody additionally in order to compensate for that. So I'm trying to figure out here, because we have a better rate for our garbage, as an example, than most of the other neighboring communities. So I'm just trying to identify your, what is your recommendation that we do? You want us to charge everybody else that's not a senior? I, I'm just, because that's what ultimately would have to happen.
I don't know how that works, but I do know the like of the vehicle stickers. All right, that has gone up, that has doubled. Okay, that was a five dollar charge a year, then it went to ten dollars for two years, and now it's twenty dollars for two years. So everything has gone up.
Okay.
But unfortunately, our social security has not gone up.
Yeah, I understand.
And we do not use the amount of water that most people use. We have one bag of garbage, the majority of it, and I broke the cost down, and it's like three, three dollars and seventy-five cents for one bag of garbage a week.
Sure.
I mean, that's a lot of money, you know.
Unfortunately, for us, a higher accounting firm to manage the specifics of how much trash each household contributes to that, or the way the garbage company does it with us, they charge us per stop. And that's the only way they measure it, because if the garbage truck has to stop to pick up a tote, it doesn't matter if I only have one bag today, or if I have twenty bags. I mean, their charges fall based on the number of stops that they take, and they average that overall for the entire village. To offer a senior discount, as much as I'd like to be able to find some creative way to do that, the only way that would take place would be on the back of all the other residents. So I, I, if you've got four hundred signatures of people that are seniors that would benefit from this...
And this is all over town.
I understand that. But if you get four hundred signatures of seniors that would benefit from this, I, I understand, I'm sympathetic to that. I'm not quite a senior yet, but maybe a couple of years.
Want to sign the petition? I already asked him, he wouldn't know it.
Well, because I already understood the problem. And I think if you're to circulate a petition like that, and good, you know, understanding what's going on there, somebody else would circulate the same, saying they don't want it, partly because for you to get the discount means that they're going to have to pay after a couple of years.
But they use more than we do. The families, the, you know, some of them have...
The water's based on consumption, it's based on usage, the rates are...
Does it get rounded up, though, as far as your meter reader? You round it up rather than taking actual reading?
It's a thousand gallon increments, so if you're using low this month, the next month you use high, it's just a thousand, thousand gallon increments. So one month it might run high, just because it just flipped over the mark one month, but it doesn't mean that, I mean, you're still getting metered exactly for usage, it's just a matter of one month it might be high, no month it might be low, because if you're splitting the bubble on a five hundred gallons, it might float up or down one month or another, but you're still getting charged exactly for your usage. So, and it's, and at a utility service, be it garbage or be it water, it's all based on consumption and usage. So, Mr. Gray, you know, you may use more water than I do. You know, you pay more than I do, that's a result of that. Mr. Gresbeck, you know, you may not use a whole lot of water, but you're still paying your, your share for the water you're giving. So, I mean, we all pay based on usage, that's the way it's designed, that's the way it's implemented. If we were to reevaluate that, then we could. What would end up happening would be, we would end up having to charge other people more to make up for that.
But if you had a larger bill, I mean, you use more, you would pay more normally anyway.
But you don't use much, so you don't pay much.
Well, if they lift a lot, they're not paying that much.
I understand. It's a good, it's a good idea. It's a good idea.
Just for the point of reference to an I theory, loud and clear, if there's four hundred and fifty people that sign that, we just had to reevaluate the way water was charged in this town, in the village, you know, several months ago. So I'd be happy to kind of break it down, as well as our finance director too, he'd probably be happy to do. So you understand the math and why we had to do what we do, but that being said, if we need to explain it to four hundred and fifty people, or if we can somehow work out something else, you know, to make the cost savings, I'm sure there was nobody up here on this, you know, up here in the front of the tier, that wouldn't be willing to talk to you about it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience.
Sid, dress back, 25654 Firestone. That's going to make the board and the public aware that the Gulf Vista Volunteers will be assisting in open voting, our early voting, beginning on October the twentieth, which is a Monday, through Saturday, November the first, and that'll be here at Village Hall. The hours Monday through Friday will be ten to four, the hours on Saturday, nine to noon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And just so everybody is aware, it is entirely a volunteer program that was put together, and as short-staffed as we are, that's a huge appreciation goes out to everybody that participates in that and helps us out with that, because voting and early voting is a very important aspect that will go on, and selecting representative will be, and it's very important. So appreciate the sit and everybody else that's involved in the process.
Jackie Harland, 25620, Shoal Creek Drive. I would just like to publicly say thank you to all of you that came out to our Mohai fundraiser that supports Gulf Vista and many other parks in the whole state. We were just very pleased with the participation that we had at the, at the outing, and it was a successful outing, and thank you very much.
Anything else under the public?
Hey, political announcement, St. Paul's Church is having their annual Oktoberfest this weekend on Saturday. There will be all kinds of events, bands, crafts, from ten to six, I believe, Jimmy Wright? So I want to make sure the public knows that.
I'm sorry, what was your address?
Did you say your name is...
Jim Pop. David Holston, 5326 West Monee, Nate Monee, thank you.
Was there a beer found there? Oh. Sorry, scared.
Now, this is going to be the first one, you missed it a long time, isn't it? So, all right. I'll close hopefully to the public. Mr. Krzyszczewski, I believe we do have something for executive session.
Yes, sir.
If the board and court will join me in executive session. I'm sorry, I need a motion to...
Make a motion.
A second.
To Gray and Raisik. Time is seven sixteen.
Page other seat.
I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
May.
Second.
Holston and Pop. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Dan Gonzalez?
Time is seven thirty-nine. Under item M on the agenda, action regarding executive session issues. Hold on just a second. I heard myself talking in the background, it was really kind of annoying. All right, I deserve every good. All right. Item M, action regarding executive session issues. I am recommending, I want to make sure I get the word correctly, I'm recommending Ruben Batista for the Office of Assistant Administrator, and I'm looking for a favorable motion, a second for that.
I'll make a second.
I'll make a motion.
All right, motion, second, and that is effective immediately?
Did you say assistant administrator?
Assistant, correct, correct. I'm recommending, I want to re-clarify this, I'm recommending the appointment of Ruben Batista for the Office of Assistant Administrator effective immediately. And is that okay with the first and the second on there? Are you guys okay with that, just clarifying that?
That was, Raisik moved in half second.
Sure. Okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Horn? I'm standing.
Okay. Nothing further on the agenda, I'm seeing a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a dump up.
Second.
Raisik and Holston? Roll call, please.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
And Holston?